Good evening, we're going to call this meeting to order for Thursday, August 22nd, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Can I have verification of the agenda posting?
My apologies. The agenda was posted on Monday, August 19th, 2019, at 10:40 AM.
Thank you, Brian. Roxanne, do you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I ask for a real call?
Chairperson Hugh Boy has an excused absence. Commissioner Stevens.
President.
Commissioner Munzer.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Henderson.
Here.
Thank you. And if the commissioners had a chance for the, to review the June 22nd, 2019 minutes, if I can have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
It's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, before we get started, I'll just go over an item here in regards to communication from the public on items not listed on the agenda. This is a time for anyone in the audience to speak on any items not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. When the Planning Commission calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and speak to the commission. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes. Please note that state law prohibits the Planning Commission from discussing or taking actions on any items not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
We don't, but this is your last chance if anyone does. Nothing.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the first item on the agenda. Minor subdivision 2018-1, site and architectural review, 2018-2. Felipe, Sam Felipe, or excuse me, Felipe 9 LLC, the applicant is requesting a minor subdivision approval to subdivide an 8.36 acre parcel into four lots consisting of 3.04 acres, 4.5, .34 acres, and .48 acres. The applicant is also requesting a site and architectural approval to construct approximately 220,000 square foot indoor greenhouse building for cannabis cultivation facility on existing commercial and fell land, including onsite parking and all utilities connections, drainage and landscape improvements. The applicant is also requesting approval of mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program prepared for the project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The project is located at 773 San Felipe Road, south of McCloskey Road and east of San Felipe Road. In North Gateway Zoning District, the location is further identified as San Benito County Access Parson Number 051100-031. This is CQ, a mitigated negative declaration, or SEQA. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission, good evening. It has come to our attention after talking with the applicant, or communicating with the applicant this morning, that for item number one and item number two, staff's requesting a continuance. Staff is going to be meeting with the applicant in the next few days to discuss some of the conditions of approval, and we're meeting, with staff and the applicant is going to be meeting in the next few days to clarify some things. And so, we are requesting that for item number one, and we'll say the same thing for item number two, that we continue the item to a date certain. At this time, we are requesting, and I know Brian's confirming some dates, but at this time, it's, we're trying to request it for the next regular meeting of September 26th. However, the applicant is here, and we would ask that you open up the public hearing and take comments and leave the public hearing open for the, for the regular meeting of September 26th.
Thank you. If I recall, the public hearing is already open on this item?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we'll ask anybody from the public who'd like to come forward and speak in regards to this item?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Gary Coats here on behalf of both Project 1 and 2, the Felipe 9 and Wright 13. And staff has explained we're requesting the continuance. We've been working with staff, we have another meeting coming up. It's been very, very positive in finalizing. There's a lot of conditions in the process that we're trying to work out, which is going well. So, we would concur with staff that if we could get that continuance from the commission, we would like to do that. I would also like to help her make a request of the possibility, and you've heard this twice before, a special meeting. As you know, we had one special meeting that there was a noticing issue that we couldn't hold. Second session, the second special meeting, there was a lack of quorum that we could not do. We have some contractual requirements ourselves that are not anything to do with the city or any issue that you've caused. We just have contractual with tenants that's coming in that we have to waive certain requirements. And the 26th would put us past that date of the, in September. So, we were trying to see if on the week of the 9th, there was a time that might work for the commission, if that would be feasible. If not, we will go with your pleasure, but if we could do that, it would help us in the process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there's any questions, I can answer whatever is necessary.
Any questions for the applicant from the commission? Great.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll leave the public hearing open. In regards to setting up a special meeting, I will leave that for the staff to reach out to the commissioners to see if that date would work, as far as a special meeting?
We would probably, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, we would probably want to make that date certain tonight.
That's correct. If we do it tonight, then that constitutes a continuing notice of the hearing. Otherwise, everyone would have to be noticed again, which I imagine in this case involves extensive mailings and that sort of thing.
It's one thing we prefer not to do with the amount of time it takes to notice. So, if the commission could look at their calendars to see if that week is doable.
And that would be the, anytime during the week of the 9th, September? Or do we want to keep it on a Thursday, which would be the 12th?
It's at the pleasure of the commission. I also want to make sure the staff is okay with moving the day around, if it's earlier the week, or if we want to stay on Thursday, the 12th.
Yeah. Staff, pertaining to staff, staff, we have an ad hoc committee meeting on the 12th?
10th.
On the 10th?
The rest of the week.
Yeah, the rest, the rest should be, should be workable. We have other, other meetings as well, but we can, we can rearrange if that's a pleasure of the commission.
So, I'll, I'll put it out there for September to the 12th.
September 12th.
And I will ask my fellow commissioners if that date works for them as well and get a consensus that the 12th would be the date that we'll set. And that's for items 1 and 2.
That's, that's correct. Items 1 and 2.
Yeah, if we could just, on item 2, I'm afraid we should wait until we actually get to that item on the agenda, and then we can proceed from there.
Do you want to see a motion for continuing this for a special meeting?
I ask that you do, please.
Okay.
So, we, do you want to check with each one of us about that week first? Or we, or we're just going with the 12th?
Now would be a time if, if the 12th doesn't work.
The 12th is the only day that works for me, actually, on that week.
It's okay for me.
Yeah. And I'm hoping that we can do that, because my concern about moving it to the next regular meeting is that we end up with a mile-long agenda, and then we're here till midnight. You know what I mean? And, and I'm more concerned about the public being able to like withstand a meeting that goes on until midnight that we've done in the past. So, I'm, I'm happy to do the special meeting on the 12th.
Would you entertain making a motion?
I'm sure. So, I'll make a motion on continuance on item, let me get that right, minor subdivision 218-1, right, for September 12th, Thursday, 6 o'clock, right?
For a special meeting.
For a special meeting.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Friendly amendment to add site and architectural review, 2018-2.
No, that's, we have to do that separate. So, we have to do that separate.
Item 2, what's that?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the same.
Yeah, so there's, there's.
Oh, oh, I hear you, okay.
There's a motion, a friendly amendment in regards to that motion.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item 2, for minor subdivision 2018-6, site and architectural review, 2018-23. This item's also being continued from tonight's agenda. The public hearing is also opened on this as well. If staff has anything to add to this?
Not at this time, Chairperson Munzer.
Okay. With the public hearing still open, I will give the applicant an opportunity if they want to add anything to this. Then, if there's no other public hearing in regards to this, I'll bring it back to the commissioners to make a motion for a special meeting for September 12th as well.
I'll make the motion that we continue item 2 on the agenda, minor subdivision 2018-6, and site and architectural review, 2018-23, to, to meet on September 12th.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item 3, Planning Commission recommendation to the City Council for mitigated negative declaration and pre-zone number 2018-1. Steve Rosati, the applicant, is requesting Planning Commission recommendation to the City of Hollister City Council for the pre-zone for annexation of one parcel of approximately 24.4 acres to the medium-density residential performance overlay, R3-M/PC zoning district in the City of Hollister, and the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration. The project site is located south of Santa Ana Road, east of Margaret Mays Middle School and Gablin Hills Elementary School, north of Meridian Street, and west of Moore Park Drive. The property is located within the City of Hollister's sphere of influence. The property is further identified as San Benito County Access Parson Number 019-310-002, SEQA mitigated negative declaration. Staff report?
Actually, real quick before staff report, I just want to disclose that I had a meeting with Victor Gomez, who is here with the applicant. I just wanted to disclose that we had a meeting to discuss this item on the agenda.
Thank you.
I would, I would also like to disclose that I had a meeting with Victor Gomez on August 12th about this item.
Thank you.
I also had a meeting with Victor Gomez to discuss this item.
Thank you.
I'd also like to clarify that it was a one-on-one, that we were not all meeting at the same time.
Right. Thank you.
I feel jealous, I haven't spoken to Victor Gomez in a long time.
[laughing]
Please, I feel unw.
Staff report?
All right, thank you. So, as mentioned, this item is a pre-zone, and the applicant is requesting approval to pre-zone 24.4 acres of land into the R3 MPZ Medium Density Performance Overlay Zoning District for future annexation. And the property is located south of Santa Ana Road, east of Margaret Mays and Gablin Hills Schools, and north of Meridian Street. The project is located within the city's sphere of influence. On your screen, the sphere is the orange dotted line, and it is bound on the east, west, and south by the city limits. So, the city limits on your screen are the thick blue line. The general plan designation for the project site in the County of San Benito is residential mixed, and in the city, of course, is medium-density residential. The City Council of the City of Hollister authorized the initiation of the application for pre-zoning of this property on February 20th, 2018, at its regular meeting with Resolution And pending the pre-zoning approval, the project site will go to LAFCO. At this time, there's no development proposed, and the environmental analysis, which was provided in your staff report and is also part of this item, evaluated the environmental effects of the maximum build-out of the property at 12 units per acre. So, medium density allows for 8 to 12 units per acre. And one thing that was evaluated, and therefore subtracted from the overall 24 acres, was about 3 acres on the actual site itself, just to back up a little bit. The 24 acres includes a portion of Santa Ana Road, so the property itself is 23 and a little bit of acres. And so, 3 of those acres will be taken up by the planned Memorial Drive extension from Hillcrest or Meridian to Santa Ana Road. So, the evaluation of the property was proposed for 20 acres at maximum build-out to accommodate for the general plan's planned road. That would happen with, however the property was developed in the future, that road will exist. So, as mentioned, the pre-zone approvals, any annexations have to go for ultimate approval to LAFCO, which is the local agency formation commission. And the sphere of influence, which is approved by LAFCO, establishes the boundary where it's anticipated that city services will be available. And so, as part of the application to LAFCO, a plan for services has to be provided for how water, sewer, and storm will be provided to any future development of the property. So, for water facilities, there's an 8-inch water line in Meridian Street directly to the south of the property, an 8-inch water line in Moore Park Drive to the east of the property, as well as a 12-inch water line in Santa Ana Road to the north of the property that are all accessible for any future development of the property. And for sewer facilities, the nearest manhole access point is at the intersection of Memorial Drive and Meridian Street, which is directly south of the project site. And for stormwater facilities, there's a 72-inch drain running along the east project boundary, which they'll connect to. They mentioned in their plan for services that there are a few other drains, I believe there's one in Santa Ana, but that, the 72-inch drain along the east, they identified as that would be the connection point for stormwater facilities. We've seen this before, but this is the overview, kind of step-by-step of how process, how the process takes place for pre-zoning for annexation, all the way through to annexation by approval of LAFCO. And so, this project has filed for the pre-zoning and initiation, and the City Council approved that again February 20th of 2018. And the environmental rule is completed, so that was the MND, the mitigated negative declaration, that we'll talk about in just a minute, that's part of this application. And now, here we are at Planning Commission recommendation to the City Council of approval of the pre-zoning. Regarding the mitigated negative declaration, the city circulated a mitigated neg-dec for the proposed pre-zone from May 30th, 2019, to July 1st, 2019. And we received four letters from state and local agencies, as well as one email from a citizen in response. And formal written responses to note are not required by SEQA law for mitigated negative declarations. However, the city, in the interest of full disclosure, as well as just a desire generally to cooperate with local agencies and anyone who has concerns, we provide comments to all, or we provide responses to all comments, and in particular, the ones that are relevant to environmental concerns or to the mitigated neg-dec itself. All of the comments were provided and the letters were provided in your staff report. However, there were two comments in particular that actually addressed environmental concerns or concerns with the mitigation measures. The remaining comments didn't address the document itself or, or the mitigation measures. So, there isn't really a response beyond we continue to cooperate. That was a lot of the concern, was, you know, we just want to be informed as anything moves forward on the property, so. But I would like to speak to just those two comments. The city got a letter on June 28th, 2019, from the Hollister School District, and the first comment they had reads, "The Hollister School District has a great interest in the development of this property and would like to see a plan that will provide for improvements to pedestrian, student safety, traffic calming, and safe routes to school. Per the mitigated negative declaration document, page 398, section 17, transportation, it appears that the document will provide for access into the proposed housing development from both Santa Ana Road and Meridian Street. The number of proposed homes will increase the number of vehicles and trips going past the front of both Margaret Mays and Gablin Hills HDLA schools throughout the day." And the city's response to that is that at this time, there are no development plans proposed. However, we acknowledge that the general plan includes the extension of Memorial Drive north from Meridian to Santa Ana Road, which directly crosses this property, so there will be those two access points. And the traffic study of the MND included study of these intersections, and determined that at full build-out of the property, there would be less than significant impacts with appropriate mitigation incorporated. Also, in the MND, we studied the possibility of roundabouts at both of those locations. And so, this is not a design phase, and because there's no significant intra, or significant impact to either of those intersections, there's no requirement to do roundabouts or other mitigation, but that's something that we're going to be looking at regardless in the design phase, if this property does move forward through annexation and come forward with development in the future. We would be looking into those kinds of mitigations, even though they're not necessary for environmental impact mitigation. And of course, we'll continue to work with the school district when processing future applications at the site. And then, secondly, the other comment that we got that brought up a concern with the mitigation measures was from the Native American Heritage Commission, which was received June 12th, 2019. And their comment was in form of an email, which indicated that the MND is in substantial compliance regarding tribal consultation and mitigation. However, it also indicated a request that the city comply with all provisions of Public Resources Code, Section 5097.98, for processes in case of discovery of human remains. And our response is that the city will comply with all regulations and requirements of that Public Resources Code section for accidental discovery of human remains. That's part of building code process, as well as can be treated with conditions of approval on any future developments. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the request, receive all written and oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following two motions. One, adopt a resolution recommending to the City Council the adoption of the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program. And secondly, adopt a resolution recommending to the City Council the approval of pre-zone 2018-1, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution. Are there any questions for staff?
I just want to comment, noted that we also received an email.
Oh, yes. So, I just got this letter from the, thank you, I forgot, I put it under my elbow and forgot about it. We got a, I just received this at about 3:30 today, which is why I was up on your podiums, from the San Benito High School District. It is, appears to be a comment on the mitigated negative declaration itself. It's similar to the one provided by the Hollister School District, and it talks about potential future impacts of residential development on the high school. And our, our response is similar in that there's no development at this time, but we will, of course, work with the district, the high school, and Hollister School District. And they, at the end of their letter, they ceded to the fact that they would, they would just like to continue to be included, and that they've also been in contact with the applicant, Victor Gomez, or Victor Gomez, who's part of the applicant's team. But if there were any particular questions, I did have a chance to read it, but I, not super thoroughly.
Great, thank you. Any other questions to, or staff?
Yeah, I have a couple, I have a couple questions. So, I just want to be really clear, when we vote on this, that the, the, the main point of our vote today and what we're considering is that we make this property part of the city limits, right? So, because it, it's kind of like this, this little block that's right in the middle of inside the city limits that is county, and so, the, that's the main purpose of this vote, right?
Yes, so.
Anything, any future planning, then we'll come back to us for consideration.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because I, I, because I did read the letter from the high school, from Superintendent Tenenbaum, and the concerns about, you know, increased population, leading to increasing enrollment in the high school. The numbers that he cited on there are really different from numbers that I had heard earlier in the year. So, I'm hoping that when and if that gets, we get to that point, that we really involve the high school in that discussion, because, just because it's a big concern. We don't want to inadvertently affect, you know, what happens at the high school without a lot of input and careful consideration. So, only the annexation into the city limits of the, of the City of Hollister is what we're considering today.
Correct. And, and to be super technical, what you're considering is a recommendation to pre-zone it, because LAFCO actually approves the annexation, and so, it would be when LAFCO, if LAFCO approves changing the city limit line, this would then come in as a specific zone, which would be R3.
Any additional questions from the commissioners? Any additional questions for staff? Okay, at this time, we will go ahead and, well, staff, thank you for the update and the report on this, and we'll go ahead and open this up for public hearing at 6:27. And this is an opportunity for the public to step forward and make comments in regards to this agenda item. Do we have any speaker cards?
A gentleman by the name of Victor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the Commission. Victor Gomez here, thank you for your time as well, for allowing me to meet with you before, before this meeting. We'd like to thank city staff, specifically Eva, for her work on this mitigated negative dec. After a number of years, specifically about 18 months, we're at this point now, so we thank you for all of your work. It's been a long time since this project has been sort of, I guess, in the works, not project specifically, but at least this, this property. The property's been part of the Rosati family for a number of decades. But in 1992 specifically, the Rosati family participated in the widening of Meridian Street, allowing for the construction of the Ford Lanes, and as some of you may know that have lived here that long, that allowed for the expansion of the new school at that time, which was Margaret Mays Middle School. So, rather than having the city purchase the land, the Rosati family did dedicate that land to the city back in 1992 at no cost, reducing the investment for the city at that time. The Meridian Street Assessment District provided needed community infrastructure and services for the City of Hollister back then, which also helped mitigate impacts of new commercial development along McCray and other areas around the city, but more importantly, around the school. And I do want to emphasize that, because I'll get to that in just a second. The Rosati property is a, is a priority infill project or property. As you know, it's bordered in three sides by the city limits. Through this MND, included the maximum of 240 units. That's likely not going to be the case. We're likely going to come back with something scaled back quite a bit. And so, we're, you know, we're excited to move this forward and move this along with your support. Proposed project will likely include multi-housing as well. I know that's been incorporated in quite a bit of subdivisions in the City of Hollister that have been brought before the Planning Commission, so we're excited to include that. As we know, multi-housing and rental housing is desperately needed here in the City of Hollister. As we're all aware, traffic circulation around Margaret Mays and Gablin Hills is less than adequate, to say the least. This project will provide much, the much anticipated extension. extension of Memorial Drive that will help movement of traffic tremendously, especially around peak school hours. This will reduce traffic levels around neighborhood streets, including Rec, Falcone, San Topes, El Toro. As many of you probably realize, a lot of those families that are picking up and dropping off kids are circulating through neighborhood streets. The Memorial Road extension is going to help tremendously with that. In addition to that, to the onsite infrastructure, the development is going to contribute roughly about $3 million in traffic impact fees for offsite improvements of the transportation network of those projects included in the Hollister and San Benito County adopted constraint list of projects. So we will eventually contribute, obviously depending on how many units we're going to be building. So with that said, obviously, we're here to encourage your support to allow us to move forward to the Hollister City Council, and then, God willing, to, to LAFCO for potential annexation. And at that time, prepare a project that I think the planning commission would be very happy with. Additionally, I just want to share with you, I had a, I had a meeting with Crystal Lamontow a couple of months ago, and I think I shared this with some of you. And she said, Victor, we just, we just need better communication from your clients. And so proactively, we received all the information, the MND and the comments from, from Eva. And we got on the phone and we called Diego and we called Sean Tenenbaum, and, and we met with both of them. Not together, but, but we met with both of them to see exactly what they would want to see around the school. Obviously, Sean's a little bit more concerned with school impact, as, as Commissioner Stevens has indicated. So it's certainly something that we're going to continue to evaluate as we move forward. And then with the Hollister School District, they, they could use some help, especially around the intersection of Memorial and Meridian. So we'll work closely with them and see what we could do to help them mitigate those issues as well, along, obviously, as mentioned, with the extension of Memorial. So, anyway, with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions and would encourage you to support these actions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Any other speaker cards?
None.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:32 and bring this back to the commissioners. Any other questions, comments in regards?
Yes, I have a question. I was wondering if Victor, you could come back up to the podium so I can ask you some questions. So when you and I met, I, I told you that my main concern is around the timing of development. It wasn't as much a concern about annexation or the zoning. I think medium zone, it's, it's appropriate for that area. And I do like the idea of expanding the kinds of houses that we have here, that they're not all just the, you know, single-family homes on a big lot, et cetera. My concern is more about the timing as we move forward in planning, you know, for the, just the broader city. And so I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about timelines that you would anticipate. And I know it's not all on, about you, because I know at some point, the project will move forward and it'll be kind of out of your hands. But I just wonder if you could talk a little bit about potentially what the timing of any kind of development would look like, and like how long it would be, that sort of thing. And, and I say that because the biggest concern, as I'm sure all of you know, is around traffic, and that becomes a big issue. And so as we're, we're, like the planning commission, city council, other, other people that are working on development and with the city, as we were looking at our roads and plans for development of our roads, then we can tie the timing of future development with some of the road planning, and we can make better decisions as we move forward. So can you just speak to that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I'll, I'll first kind of talk about best-case scenario, I guess, timeline, best case from the development side. So likely, you know, if we make it out of the planning commission tonight, we would likely go to the city council for, for their approval, probably around October timeframe, I'm assuming. And then likely from there, I think there's a 30-day appeal period. After the appeal period, we could submit, I think we submit, or the city submits the application for annexation to LAFCO. Likely, I think we could probably be scheduled with LAFCO for annexation around February, March timeframe. Depends on what Bill Nicholson has, obviously, on his, on his schedule moving forward. They don't meet in December, I don't think. So likely, again, I think the earliest we would be able to get there is probably around February timeframe. After that, we then, you know, work towards proposing a tentative map. That timeline could, could change a bit, because, you know, we have many stakeholders that we need to connect with. We're gonna, it's, it's, and I shared this with all of you, it's my intention to have the Hollister School District Superintendent and the San Benito High School Superintendent and/or others actually write letters of support. I know that sounds crazy, but, you know, maybe get them to the point of saying, hey, yeah, we've worked out the mitigation issues, let's move forward, right? So after LAFCO, say we make it in February, there is also an appeal period. We'll get to that around the March timeframe. We may, we could submit tentative map, we could submit our tentative map application, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, anytime after that period. And so that's, best-case scenario would be somewhere around the May timeframe, likely. And that is for the, the tentative map application. And then obviously, staff has to run it through the, through the development review committee process and kind of go back and forth until we get to a point that staff is satisfied. And then they could finally bring it to you with conditions of approval as well. And so probably next summer for vesting tentative map approval. But then after that, obviously, we're just working, working the entitlements. After that, it's all kind of on our side to finalize the map and, and really find a buyer for it, right? So I'll use Roberts Ranch, because that's another project that I've worked on. We received vesting tentative map approval of Roberts Ranch, I want to say in March or April of 2018, I believe it was. We finally have that property in Escrow. And we're hoping to close Escrow, I think, in December or January. And then the, the builder, the developer comes in and, and then they set their timelines. Now, with all of that said, there is a proposed, single-family unit metering through the, through the growth management ordinance. That's likely going to come before the Hollister City Council. I'm assuming the next couple of months. And if that is the case, we're kind of going to have to, you know, the, the, excuse me, the developer is going to have to fight for entitlements or building permits, excuse me, to start building, right? And I think that's likely going to land around 160 units per year. And so they're going to have to duke it out with Roberts Ranch and with other subdivisions that have been approved in our community. And so you're only going to hit that, for single-family units, I think everything else has been exempt, if I'm not mistaken, or will be exempt, it hasn't been approved yet. So they'll have to kind of duke it out for those, for those building permits on an annual basis. So I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns from the commissioners?
Kind of like what Roxanne was saying about the, like what we're discussing just tonight is the moving it forward to send it to LAFCO. So I don't have, from what I understood, my understanding in meeting, you know, that's not a concern. My concern is more along the lines of the amount of housing that's going to be coming in, which doesn't mean for tonight, that's not going to, on the table. But just as a future reference, like you said, I would really like you to be talking with the superintendents and the principals of the schools. I know that Monique would love, Monique Ruiz, who's the principal of Gablin Hills and HDLA, would love to talk with you and be kept in the loop of what's going on, because that's, her schools are right there. And, but that's where my, my concern is. It doesn't mean it's for tonight, but for future references, how we're going to work it out so that everybody's happy, not just certain amounts.
Any other comments? Well, I see, you know, this is, the commissioners coming forward to make a recommendation to annex this into the city. I see a couple of challenges with this, with this project is, is the traffic flow around the school. And I would definitely encourage you guys to partner with, with staff to come up with some sort of, some sort of resolution in regards to traffic flow with the project moving forward. With that being said, what is the pleasure of the commission on this item?
I actually have a quick question. Are we having two different motions, one for one and two?
Yes. So one will be for the mitigated negative declaration to recommend approval, and the second would be for the pre-zone itself to recommend approval. And the resolution number would be 2019-36.
Okay, we'll make the motion that we adopt a resolution recommending to the city council the adoption of the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which would be resolution 2019-36.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item, in regards to the PC resolution, 2019-36 has passed. What is the pleasure of the commission on the second item?
I'll make the resolution, I'll make the motion to adopt resolution 2019-37.
Correct.
Recommending to the city council the approval of pre-zone 2018-1, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item. Item number four, Site and Architectural Review, number 2019-15. Philip Moss, Taco Bell, the applicant is requesting site and architectural approval to remodel the existing 2,620 square-foot Taco Bell drive-through restaurant at 431 Trustupinos Road, which is located in the general, commercial zoning district. The property is located with the Hollister Shopping Center south of Trustupinos Road, further identified as San Benito County Assessor Parcel Number 057-230-016. This item is sequoque category exempt. Staff, report?
Thank you. The applicant has informed us that they would like to request that this item be moved to a date certain of September 26, the next regular scheduled planning commission meeting. So with that, staff asks that the commission open up the public hearing, receive public comment, keep the public hearing open, and continue the item for Site and Architectural Review 2019-15 to the regular planning commission meeting of Thursday, September 26, 2019.
Great, thank you, Ms. Cameron. This time I will go ahead and open up the public hearing for this item at 6:43. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
We have nothing.
Okay, we'll continue to leave this item, the public hearing of this item open and bring it back to the commissioners. Any, any questions on this item for staff?
I just have a question. Just, any idea of how this is gonna, what this is going to do to add to the agenda for that month's meeting?
As of, as of right now, we've only received about two or three applications. And at least two of them are conditional use permits, which are usually pretty straightforward. So it, it shouldn't be too bad.
Okay.
Yeah, we're with you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. If there's no other questions, if we can get a, a motion to move this item to September 26?
I'll make a motion to move item four for the Site and Architecture Review 2019-15 to the September 26 meeting.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item number five, tentative map number 2019-3, condition use permit number 2019-5, Tony Ferreira. The applicant is requesting a tentative map to subdivide a 53,578.8 square-foot parcel into four residential lots, each with a single-family residential unit and accessory dwelling and a conditional use permit for the planned unit development at 1650 Cienega Road within the low-density residential performance overlay zoning district. The property is located between San Benito Street and Cienega Roads west of Henry Court, further identified as San Benito County Assessor's Parcel Number 020-170-035. And this item is sequoque category exempt.
Thank you, Chairperson. To reiterate, the applicant is requesting approval of the minor subdivision to subdivide approximately 1.23 acres into four individual lots, located at 1650 Cienega Road. And the parcel is in the R1 LPZ Low Density Residential Performance Overlay Zoning District. And the applicant is proposing to construct a single-family residential unit, as well as an accessory dwelling unit on each of the four lots, for a total of eight units. Accessory dwelling units are by design, smaller, affordable units, which are able to be rented separately from the main unit. The property has access off of Cienega Road to the east and backs into San Benito Street to the west. And the development will not have direct access to San Benito Street. They are proposing a 20-foot private road on the south boundary of the site, which accesses the proposed parcels. And the lot sizes are as follows, starting on the right of your screen with parcel one at 13,010 square feet. Parcel two is 12,942 square feet. Parcel three is 13,566 square feet. And parcel four is 13,842 square feet. The R1 LPZ zoning district allows for development at densities of 1 to 8 dwelling units per acre. And ADUs are not included in density calculations. They're permitted only on single-family residential lots. And they have size restrictions, just for information. ADUs have to be 850 square feet of livable space or less. So anything more than that, we would consider a duplex. And that would be a second unit, and that would be multifamily. But in this case, they are single-family lots with ADUs. And so for density purposes, we just count the four units. And that's at 4.92 dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the R1 zoning. For the conditional use permit, 2019-5 for the planned unit development, due to the layout of the existing lot, it's kind of a flag lot, L shape. The proposed unit on parcel two faces to the west, rather than fronting onto the private drive to the south. And so the applicant's requesting a conditional use permit for a PUD to have adjusted setbacks for this parcel to accommodate this west-facing unit. And so the, the parcel two setbacks would be six feet to the private road on the south side. Into the west, which is kind of the front of the property, would be 20 feet to the garage and 18 feet to the residence. On the north, which is the side, they would be six feet. And to the east, which is the rear property, it's 20% of the lot depth, or 15 feet as the minimum. And note that the proposed unit that they have shown on their parcel map is indicated to exceed these minimum setback requirements. However, what is being proposed by staff and indicated in the conditional use permit conditions is the standard residential setbacks in R1 just rotated to the side. And then all of the three other parcels comply with the regular R1 zoning setbacks, which is exactly the same. Frontage is 20 feet to the garage, 18 feet to the residence, six-foot side yards, 15-foot slash 20% lot depth rear yard. They just actually front their frontages. And as far as the ADUs, they'll all have to comply with the 1722040 section of the code, which describes all of the requirements for accessory dwelling units, and comply with minimum setbacks for detached structures, which is 10 feet from main unit and five from rear and side fences. The project is designated in the general plan as low-density residential, which again is also 1 to 8 dwelling units per acre. And this project is still consistent at 4.92 units per acre. And for a little bit of background, this property was pre-zoned and annexed into the city in June of 2014, along with the property directly to the north. And on June 20- And on June twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, the planning commission approved tentative map twenty sixteen dash three and a conditional use permit twenty sixteen dash six, which proposed to divide the whole property into eight single-family lots. And then that map and conditional use permit were given a one-year extension in two thousand eighteen, as well as in June, you'll know that you, the planning commission, adopted a resolution providing a second one-year extension. This map replaces that map, they, they found a buyer, the property owner, and the buyer's interested in doing this different type of development on this property. So staff recommends that the planning commission review the applicant's request, receive all written in oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motions. One would be to approve minor subdivision twenty nineteen dash three, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution, and the second would be to approve conditional use permit twenty nineteen dash five for a planned unit development, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution. And before I hand it back over to you, just so you know, but they're not really included in the minor subdivision map or the conditional use permit, the applicant did provide, and you'll saw in your plans, proposed elevations and floor plans for the four units, so I just wanted to show, share those here. But single-family residential isn't subject to planning commission approval, so these will go through the building permit process and be approved administratively, so if they change slightly, that would be why. But they're all proposed as single-family residential, all four of the units, and the ADUs would be single-story as well, and this is a rendering of what it is proposed to look like. Are there any questions for staff?
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Any, any questions from the commissioners for staff? If we have no questions?
Yeah, I just, I actually do have, well, I'm not sure if it's a question, I just, it's more of a clarification, so then, the, so, so there will be four, four lots, and then each one will have two units on it, so then, one would be, so then basically, if you were to purchase one, you would purchase the two units.
Exactly, yes. And they're, they're like small, kind of, they're granting units on, on each lot, so they could be for a family member, or potentially the property owner would want to rent it to someone else in, just in town, but yeah, it would be, it would be like if you had a single-family home and you wanted to build a granny unit in your lot. And there is a condition of approval, it's one of the last ones, I could get the number if you'd like, that we have conditioned the project so that we ensure that the ADUs do get built, and these aren't just large, single-family lots, to, prior to final occupancy of the main unit on each lot, that the applicant pulls a building permit for the ADU on that same lot.
And the, just one more, one more.
I was just gonna say, if you, if you go to the next slide, it'll show in pink where the layout of the property, so you can see the two units on.
Yeah, okay. And then the, the front of the, of these homes will be facing, so it'd be like facing where the high school football field is?
So, no, so, parcel one faces Cienega Road, and then the ADU faces south, and just directly to the south is the church.
Okay.
And then this ADU would face, actually, I'm not sure on the ADUs, if they're actually gonna face south, but they would have drive access to the south, they may actually face the units. The applicant is, or here, or they're engineering, and they, they might be able to answer that question if they already have planned it out. And then parcel two faces west, it's technically going towards the high school fields, but they'll be looking at their fence and their neighbor's house, and then the parcels three and four face, face south to the church parking as well. And there's gonna be a sound wall, which matches the sound wall that's existing along this property line on San Benito Street.
For the two ADU units on the, on parcel four and three? How do they access that ADU unit, like for parking purposes, and, because I see the other two want to have driveways, those two do not look like they have them.
There's a drive here, and this is a fire access turnaround, so it's adequate for fire access, and then they'll just have a drive here, and it appears to be gravel, so they probably won't be paving this whole part, but they'll be gravel, and then they'll have a parking area each.
Okay, I just, that's what I'll make sure, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Any other questions for staff? If we have no other questions for staff, I'd like to go ahead and open this up for public hearing at six fifty-five. Any speaker cards?
None.
Does the applicant want to address any items at this time? Any questions for applicant? Okay, if we have no speaker cards, no questions for the applicant, we'll go ahead and close public hearing at six fifty-five, and we'll bring it back to the commissioners. Any other items to discuss or recommend?
I just want clarification, so these granting units, ADU units, these are gonna be owned by whoever buys that property itself, so like if I went and bought this property, I would have two dwellings.
Correct, yeah, they're, they're not condemned, so they are both building structures on one property.
So then it would be up to the property owner itself, they want to either keep it as a unit for a family member, or they want to rent it out on their own, okay.
So if you were to, I, I don't know if you guys ever driven on like Morning Glory, Lavender, one of the developer years ago did the same kind of concept, they built the house, and they have a little secondary unit. I've mentioned it before in this meeting, I think those ideas are, are pretty useful because it, it takes care of two issues, one is the problem in which we have a shortage of housing and rentals, and so this gives the property owner to be able to manage that unit next to them, and also potentially gives affordable housing for somebody who could rent a small unit with a starting family.
I too agree with that, that, that's why I was asking about, you know, versus property owners versus renting, this will give someone who's buying a property the ability to pay part of their mortgage by renting out that part, and then also being able to manage it. So I mean, I really like the concept, I, I see them around town every now and then, I get a little bit jealous, because I would love to have a granny unit, but, so I, I like seeing this type of building happening more often.
That or the in-laws move in, you got a built-in babysitter, yes.
That's exactly why I was thinking that.
Yeah, if there's no other questions or comments from the commissioners, what is the pleasure of the commission on this item?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, if that's where we're at, yeah. Okay, so, am I just reading the title of this, of this item, or do I need to add anything else to it?
You don't need to add anything, you can actually read off the slide, and it would just be adopt a resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-eight, and then approving minor subdivision, and just exactly like it is on the screen, if, unless there was a change you'd like to make.
Uh, no, okay, let me just get it on my screen.
You're looking for two separate motions?
Two separate, the first would be the minor subdivision, and the second would be the CUP for PUD.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to adopt the minor subdivision twenty nineteen dash three? Is that right?
Yep. And the resolution number would be twenty nineteen dash thirty-eight.
Resolution number twenty dash, twenty nineteen dash?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Subject to the? Subject to the findings and conditions.
Subject to the findings and conditions contained on the draft resolution, thank you.
There's a, a motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes. Second one. Pleasure of the commission for? What's the piece, is there?
The resolution number would be thirty-nine, yes.
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution approving conditional use permit twenty nineteen dash five for planned unit development, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution for PC twenty nineteen dash thirty-nine. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your project. Moving on to item number six, site and architectural review number twenty nineteen dash fourteen. Staff report? I, I took the, the steam out of it from Ms. Kelly on the last one, so I figured I'll let you fill it in.
So for this item, the applicant has asked that this item be moved to a date certain of September twenty-sixth, the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. With that, staff recommends that the commission open up the public hearing, receive public comment, keep the public hearing open, and continue the public hearing for site and architectural two thousand nineteen dash fourteen to the regular planning commission meeting of Thursday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Great, thank you, Ms. Kelly. We will go ahead and open up the public hearing at seven oh one. Any speaker cards on this item?
Zero.
Okay, we'll go ahead and leave this public hearing open for a future date, in which, is there a proposal, a recommendation from, or a, for the, from the commissioners in regards to continuing this item?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue item six, site and architectural review twenty nineteen dash fourteen to the September twenty-sixth meeting.
I will second that, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item passes, we'll see it on the September twenty-sixth agenda. That does it for the items on the agenda, moving on to new business, any new business?
There's no new business from staff.
Is there any old business?
No old business either.
Is there any planning department reports?
We can, we don't have any on the staff, but, but we can, we can add, Victor mentioned earlier about the growth management ordinance, if that's okay, we just want to briefly update the planning commission. The city council heard an item in, in August in regards to a growth management ordinance implementation, limiting the number of units, residential units, to a certain, certain amount. It's been in discussion in the past, there's been different recommendations, but the number that the city council has concurred with, as, as the majority of the, of the city council's recommendation was a number that's consistent to one hundred and, I believe it was one hundred and fifty-nine, or the minimum number as required by the state of California to meet the regional housing allocation needs. And so essentially, the, the regional housing allocation needs that currently the city of Hollister has to plan for between two thousand and fifteen all the way to two thousand and twenty-three are one thousand three hundred and sixteen, so dividing that by, by eight, the minimum number for, for that would be like a one hundred and sixty-four point five, so one hundred and sixty-five units. The growth management ordinance would likely go before the city council later in September, the second meeting is September or, or in October, but the draft basically indicates that that would be the number, and that would be mainly for single-family residential units. The exemptions would be affordable housing, multifamily housing, special needs housing, such as senior housing, and farmworker housing, and, and there's a list of, of others as well. So if, if, we can update the planning commission in a future meeting, once we have that for, for the council.
The items, or the, the type of homes you just mentioned, those were exempt from that one thing?
Exempt from that, from that one, one sixty-five or so units per, per year.
And the original number was two forty-four?
The original number was two hundred and forty-four, and that was a number that was, that was contemplated by the council, because back in two thousand and two, when the previous growth management ordinance was, was enacted in the city of Hollister, that, that was a number that the city of Hollister had, two hundred and forty-four units per year, and that was consistent to about a two and a half percent growth rate in the city of Hollister. And I know in going to the business council meetings, I know that the business council was also in support of, of having a number that is, that was not less than two and a half percent growth, because of, you know, they just, they, they felt that that was a number that can help them with their, with the existing businesses in the city of Hollister, and, and hopefully, future businesses to come into the city. So I know that that was part of what was discussed previously on, on having that same number, because it was present, that was a number that was there in, in the past here in the city for the growth management ordinance. But then there was future discussions at, at the council level, especially with, with some of the changes that have occurred with the council members, and the discussion was to lower that number, and the, finally, in August, the number was concurred, not, not a, not a, not by everybody, but the majority, I think it was a three-two-oh, at one, one sixty-five, or, or one fifty-nine, or the minimum that the, that the HCD would require per year.
And the original two and a half percent that you're talking about, that's in regards to rooftop, two and a half percent, or population?
In regards to rooftop, good question, because at that time, there was about roughly ten thousand residential units, including multifamily, single-family, of course, single-family being the majority, so that two hundred and forty-four was at a, about two, two and a half, two and a half percent growth rate per year, yes.
And so the, the one sixty is roughly at one percent?
The one sixty would probably be roughly at, at about, at about one percent, yes. But, but again, but again, that's not including, so if somebody came in with a hundred percent affordable housing, that they would not be able to go through this one sixty-five, they would not be subject to that, that number. Multifamily rental housing, that, that would not be subject to that number, they, they wouldn't have to go through that allocation process.
Great, thank you, I look forward to that update.
You, you got it, you're welcome.
Ms. Swanson?
Yes, thank you. Last week, Chairperson Uboy came to see me, wanted me to deliver something to the planning commission while he was preparing to leave town, I believe for a vacation, he wanted to make sure, he gave this to me, and I, and I told what you wanted, what he wanted me to, to tell you, so this is his letter, and it says, Dear fellow commissioners and city staff, on August fourth, two thousand nineteen, my dear friend Robbie Scatini passed away. Many of us knew Robbie, he had many friends throughout the city and county. As a public official, he definitely made many contributions to our community in several capacities. I do not know of anyone who worked harder to better our provincial world than Robbie Scatini. He could be tough, but I knew him as a gentle, caring man. In Robbie's words, I love Hollister, I love the county, I love the people, I feel I can give back. Truer words have never been spoken. I humbly request that you adjourn this meeting in memory of Robbie Scatini.
Thank you, my condolences, I, that's the first I had heard, I, I guess I was missing as far as the, you know, notice, getting the notice or anything that he had passed, my condolences in regards to the passing of Robbie, and I know that he was an active member in this community and served as different roles within the community, and, and served as a, as a counselor for many years, right? I'd be honored to, to close this meeting in, in memory of Mrs. Scatini.
Thank you.
Any other reports, or?
Uh, one more, sorry. So staff is currently tentatively trying to schedule an ad hoc sign committee meeting. Right now, we have reached out to both the planning commission ad hoc members and the council ad hoc members, so we're just waiting for confirmation, but it's tentatively scheduled for September tenth, here at six PM in the city chambers, so we'll be trying to make that more publicized when we get the final count on how many of the planning and council members will be available.
Thank you. Any planning commission reports? Anything, any updates in regards to the, I'm drawing a blank, the general plan, thank you.
Yeah, Abraham, if you could give an update, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely, so, the city went out to request for proposals on the general plan update for the, to have a consultant provide proposal for the environmental report on the general plan, to help the city guide with the preparation of the. to help the city guide with the preparation of the general plan and the environmental aspect of it as well. And so that period ended on August 14. Actually, we'll be discussing the consultants that submitted their proposal and the next steps on that. So we're hoping to come back to the city council with a recommendation of a consultant in September. And also, currently, there is an advertisement out for the fifth member of the general plan advisory committee for the GPEC. And so I know we've had some applications in already. And so we're hoping to also have that fifth member onboard in September, and hopefully, get started with the general plan advisory commission meetings for the updated general plan as soon as October, definitely by the end of this year.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, before we adjourn this meeting, I would just like to take a moment, if we take a moment in silence, just to remember Robbie Scatini and his life and the role that he played in this community. Great, thank you. If we can have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll have a motion to adjourn.
And a motion and a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you at the next meeting, Thursday, September 26, 2019, at 6:00 PM.